Community Board Two, this is a special meeting. I guess under the, I guess emphasis or under the area of the Landmark Land Use Committee of Community Board Two in Brooklyn. I am Carlton Gordon and I guess for our committee, I see Karen Johnson, who's our secretary. How you doing Karen? Also, we have these new special, our, our new co-chair, Daughtry Castorfen is also here. And I don't know if Irene is, Janice is in? I guess Irene is still way up in Rhode Island. Okay, all right. So this is a special meeting for planning together. These are proposals coming from the office of the Speaker of the New York City Council, Corey Johnson. This is a, this is planning together, which is a combination of report and a legislative proposal, putting it together by the Speaker's office, which would implement a new comprehensive planning process for the city of, or framework for the city of New York. I guess our speaker will be Annie Levers, I don't really have the last name properly, so excuse me, who's Assistant Deputy Director of the New York City Council Office of Strategic Initiatives. So I guess Miss Levers or Annie, you have the ball.
Thank you, and you got my name exactly right, so Annie Levers.
Okay.
Thank you again. So I will go ahead and share my screen. All right, can you see everything okay?
Yes.
Great.
You're getting ready, I just should just make sure since this isn't a formal meeting, it does have an agenda, just give me a moment, my, my apologies. We'll just ask, is there any objection to the adoption of the agenda? Okay, here, I hear no objection to the adoption of the agenda. I think we've gone over some of the names of our committee, so go ahead, Annie, I'm sorry.
No worries, thank you.
Okay.
So again, my name is Annie Levers, thank you so much for having me here to present tonight and having this special meeting, I really appreciate it. I am the Assistant Deputy Director for the Office of Strategic Initiatives at the New York City Council. Our division spearheaded the Planning Together Report and Legislative Proposal that I'll be presenting here tonight. So this is a bill that's been introduced in the council and is going through the regular legislative process. The bill had a hearing in February, but that's just one of the many ways that we're getting feedback on it, including meetings like this one. So I want to thank you again for inviting me here and taking the time to hear the presentation. In terms of next steps, there's no real rush, we're not on a ULR clock or any clock of any kind, and we have no set plan for a timeline for passing the bill. So we'd absolutely welcome your thoughts and feedback to strengthen the bill at whatever point in time you see fit. So I won't spend a ton of time on these key issues tonight, but will instead, you know, direct you to the report, which goes into a lot of detail on each of these, citing a lot of great resources and research. But in short, we believe the city's planning mandates are insufficient, they're scattered, they're confusing. This leads to inefficiencies and a lack of coordination between city agencies, and our planning regime is really purely reactionary. There are very few meaningful opportunities for communities to proactively plan for their futures. Instead, we are left reacting to individual rezoning applications from the mayor or private developers. The city often does nothing to support the creation of proactive 197A plans, sort of forcing communities to find the funds to pay consultants, front the cost of environmental review, and even where communities are able to find those funds and put the plans together, the city often outright ignores them, even where there's a really good 197A plan in place in future rezoning decisions. So the city's sort of piecemeal, project by project approach to rezonings has really exacerbated inequality. The budget is rarely, if ever, connected to the policy or land use priorities of the city, which is worsened by the fact that our budget decisions are almost entirely divorced from assessments of capital needs, which are also totally insufficient. So in response to these issues, the council started working on a proposal for comprehensive planning under the direction of Speaker Johnson during the 2019 Charter Revision Commission. The Speaker was supportive of implementing comprehensive planning through that process, but when the commission didn't take up the issue, we continued developing a version of the proposal that could be adopted by the council via local law. So the proposal that I'll describe here tonight is designed specifically to center issues of equity, access to affordable housing, sustainability and resilience within the full range of policy, budget and land use tools to better achieve our citywide and neighborhood goals. It's also designed to enhance public participation in the creation of the goals that we set for the city as a whole, to ensure we're meeting the unique needs of each community while tackling citywide challenges. So right now, any given mayor could come into office in 2022 and set citywide goals in line with their electoral agenda. That mayor could say, we need to generate another 500,000 units of affordable housing, without any rationale for how that number was chosen, what kinds of housing we need and what we're hoping to produce at what decks of affordability or opportunity for public input. So this proposal would implement what every other major city in the country, and really the world, uses to set those citywide goals, which is comprehensive planning. So this proposal creates a process for communities to proactively weigh in, to prioritize the issues we see affecting our neighborhoods over and over again, but might not, might never get prioritized by a given mayor because it doesn't align with their electoral agenda or get headlines as our neighborhood issues. So it would set citywide and neighborhood-specific goals in partnership with other elected officials, community boards, community stakeholders and members of the general public, instead of just leaving all of that solely in the hands of the mayor. And it would flip the script on individual ULR applications from the city and developers. So right now, we're stuck reacting to proposals that are almost entirely fully baked by the time they come to the community board. This bill would create a proactive process through which you would all create a proactive plan that developers would be required to react and respond to, rather than the other way around. So the first thing to note, which I mentioned already, is that comprehensive planning is extremely common. New York City is really an outlier. Every other major city in the country engages in some form of comprehensive planning, but for decades, New York City has repeatedly abandoned attempts to require comprehensive planning in favor of this sort of ad hoc approach, despite the fact that comprehensive planning is widely accepted as a best practice, especially for tackling issues of sustainability and climate change. So some might argue that the way we do things now works just fine, just muddling through sort of one project or topic or neighborhood at a time. And while that approach may have gotten us through the last century, an ad hoc approach to combating the climate crisis is going to be a disaster if we continue on with this piecemeal approach to dealing with the fact that by 2100, all of our coastal neighborhoods are going to be flooding every day at high tide. Our housing and homelessness crisis is only going to get worse with climate change. Eighty percent of the housing units in the current floodplain are affordable housing, and twenty-eight percent of those units are NITRA units. And even in the shorter term, you know, unemployment rates are through the roof, small businesses are suffering, but we really have no clear path to generate more accessible, high-quality jobs that New Yorkers can access and get in the short term. And we have this backlog of capital needs that grows by billions and billions of dollars every year, as our existing infrastructure degrades. We have no rational or equitable system for prioritizing what needs to get fixed first or in which neighborhoods, let alone deciding what new infrastructure needs to get built and where. So yes, revenues are tight, and we're in a big election year, which makes this sort of the perfect time to begin engaging in this kind of strategic comprehensive planning to ensure there's a process in place to inform our next mayor and council's plans for our city and our neighborhoods before ULRP already rezonings or budget negotiations come at us at an ad hoc basis. So before I jump into the details of the proposal, I want to spend a minute clearing up some facts about what the proposal does and does not do. It's a really long, very complicated, 25-page bill, that's really like, you know, tearing apart the charter and putting it back together again. So as you can imagine, there's some confusion as to what the bill actually requires. So first, what it doesn't do.
Ms. Levers?
Yeah?
Just wanted to let you know that there's a small blue box in the upper right-hand corner that's blocking some of your text.
Oh, interesting.
If you could close that.
Re-opened closed PDFs, I wasn't sure what that's.
Click the X.
Okay, go. Thank you. I'm always afraid to touch things on these platforms because it sometimes just closes the application completely, but anyway, thank you for that. So what it doesn't do, it does not require or make any amendments or changes to the city's zoning resolution whatsoever, and it does not create a zoning czar. It does not require or trigger requirements for any kind of rezoning, let alone upzonings ever. It does not propose or support the elimination of single-family zoning, that's another misconception, nor does it propose any specific rezoning actions whatsoever. And it does not amend or eliminate community boards' role in future rezoning processes, all of which would remain subject to ULRP. So what it does do is require the city to provide community boards and the public with new resources, data and analyses to support proactive, community-based planning. It encourages the city to direct any new development or growth away from low-lying areas vulnerable to sea-level rise or other displacement risks like rising rents or speculation. It identifies and prioritizes communities' urgent budget needs regardless of whether or not those neighborhoods will be rezoned, and I will say that that is the number-one demand of the coalition that we're working with, of organizers and advocates who have been calling for complanning for decades. They really feel that, you know, they've been sort of, communities have been forced into a position of, you know, accepting a huge upzoning in order to get the investments that are long overdue in their neighborhoods, rather than doing that proactive planning, regardless of whether or not they're going to get rezoned, which is what this would provide. And then it finally just gives all neighborhoods the opportunity to proactively plan for their futures on an ongoing basis, which is, again, is a standard and common practice. So the comprehensive planning framework is designed to build that sort of shared proactive vision for the city's future across community stakeholders, city agencies, elected officials and the New Yorkers those elected officials represent. The comprehensive plan itself would be informed by all of these various inputs, and these factors will all look very different from neighborhood to neighborhood, which is exactly why this proposal focuses purely on process reform and does not propose or support any specific zoning changes, because recommendations need to be customized and responsive to the unique needs of each neighborhood. So in each neighborhood, we'd have to consider principles of equity and justice to correct existing and historic neighborhood disparities and ensure the equitable distribution of resources and development. Climate and displacement risks, you know, facing our city, but especially for the neighborhoods already bearing the impacts of climate change and the ones that will relate, they're the brunt of it over the next 20, 50 years. Community input to lift up, preserve and enhance what communities love about their neighborhoods and prioritize their vision for change, all while meeting citywide goals, so measurable targets for.
Excuse me?
Sure. Yes? Did someone say, excuse me?
Yes, hello?
Oh.
Can you, can you take your pace down a pace?
Oh, my.
Folks are having problems following.
Sure.
Thank you.
Um, yes. Where was I? Okay, community input to lift up, preserve and enhance what communities love about their neighborhoods and over here. And prioritize their vision for change in their neighborhoods, all while meeting citywide goals. So these would be measurable targets for jobs, resiliency infrastructure, open space, transportation, arts and culture, public health, all of the good stuff that we need to fit in our city over the next 20 or 50 years in order to support thriving communities and have our city run. A robust physical needs assessment would inform those citywide goals, examining really for the very first time all of the city's existing infrastructure and repair needs. This is something that we do not do right now in any useful format. So, you know, this report would include the urgency of those repair needs across our neighborhoods, identifying serious disparities. And again, it would go down to a very detailed level with respect to all of the city's infrastructure and buildings that need repair and maintenance, so that we can better prioritize those needs. Neighborhood history, including an examination of the impact of recent rezonings and development on our neighborhoods to assess whether or not the city's sort of on-the-ground development decisions are really achieving their intended long-term policy goals. The city does not currently engage in any such review. And last but not least, neighborhood needs. Again, what are the budget needs of our communities as they stand right now, regardless of whether or not we expect those neighborhoods to grow or change, so that we can prioritize those first and foremost in the city's budget and planning process? And these are really standard and common features and comprehensive plans all across the country that we've explicitly built into the legislation. So by taking all of these factors into consideration, we're building a process that will be able to be responsive and sensitive to the needs of many and various, various communities across the city. Oops. Okay. So the framework connects dozens of reports and plans and documents that are actually already required by the charter and produced by the city, and in some, in this case, community boards are, you know, some of these documents are also produced by community boards. So all of these documents you see here on the left already exist, they mostly are produced by the mayor without any opportunity for public input at all. And while they could together be conceived of as a comprehensive plan of some kind, the charter doesn't make clear whether or how they're supposed to relate to one another. They really are all floating off as just these disjointed documents. On the right, you'll see the depiction of the new cycle, which would connect all of these disjointed documents, processes and reports required by the charter already to create one citywide strategic framework and vision. So this starts with community boards' district needs statements, which the charter will now make clear should directly inform the city's budget planning documents and long-term plan. The DNS would then inform the production of the new conditions of the city report, which would feed into citywide policies and goals, which would inform the city's long-term plan and ultimately our budget. So each document would really build on the last, and the charter would also require new milestones for public engagement before and after the production of each of these documents, which I'll walk you through later in the presentation. Okay. So the framework is designed to lay a solid foundation for good proactive, community-based planning work to get done by setting clear timelines and milestones and well-defined roles for each of the stakeholders you see on this slide that could be built on and adapted over time. So community boards and borough presidents would play an ongoing role during the tenure planning cycle and would adopt recommended land use scenarios, which would then come to the council for review and adoption, sort of like 197A plans do now. We've also built in opportunities for the general public to weigh in, which was really important to both us and the coalition we're working with to get all New Yorkers involved in their planning process. These frameworks, you know, that you're adopting would essentially set the vision for what future land use applications would get measured against. The Office of Long-Term Planning and Sustainability and its director already exists, so the office currently goes by the name of the Mayor's Office of Sustainability. The director and of that mayoral office is responsible for putting together the Plan YC, One NYC reports, once every four years. But that plan doesn't require any meaningful public engagement or council adoption, so our proposal infuses those requirements by bouncing it off all of these various stakeholders for public review and council adoption into the city's sort of existing planning framework, which is this Plan YC or One NYC document, so that we are creating new opportunities for creating consensus and public input. A new long-term planning steering committee and a borough steering committee would help set the city's goals, and I'll talk more about them on the next slide. And then finally, the CPC would play an ongoing role in their review and certification of ULRP applications as they do now, but now they'd be required to measure those applications against what's in the long-term plan. So the Long-Term Planning Steering Committee is really the only sort of new-ish body that we're creating, although it does already exist. So there is an advisory board that advises on this Plan YC document, the One NYC report that comes out every four years. And so what we are doing is really reimagining this. Right now, it advises the city on those reports, but aside from the Speaker of the Council and the Chair of the Council's Environmental Protection Committee, the board is entirely composed of as many mayoral appointees as the mayor wants. So right now, it has 39 members, 37 of which are appointed by the mayor. So again, we're reimagining this body to be more democratic, with four mayoral appointees, four Speaker appointees and one appointee for each borough president. So it's envisioned as a technical body with requirements for appointees to represent groups and individuals who have been historically left out of development decisions in the past, and they would really help set the city's long-term citywide infrastructure targets, not just for housing, but for schools, open space, again, resiliency infrastructure, sewer capacity, arts and cultural space, job creation, transit infrastructure and public health, all based on assessments of current conditions and community input. So they're really envisioned to be this sort of goal-setting body that prioritizes thinking about the city's long-term needs, not just reviewing individual ULRP applications as the CPC does right now. They would also be required to convene more demographically diverse borough steering committees to direct and inform their work. So those borough steering committees would be required to reflect the diversity of the borough's residents and workers with respect to race, ethnicity, earnings, age, gender and ability, but also homeownership rates and immigration status. So finally, the steering committee would also be empowered to develop and adopt land use scenarios. But the steering committee's most important role will be the setting of these critical infrastructure targets to address both our citywide and neighborhood-specific needs, rather than sitting that responsibility solely with the mayor as it is right now. I just wanted to pull up this slide, which really is just the bill text with respect to these two indices that will inform the plan. We pulled these two indices from Seattle's comprehensive planning engagement process, and it's really one of the most critical ways that we've tried to bake equity into the bill language itself to help ensure that the needs of low-income communities and communities of color are prioritized in this process in a way that helps ensure funding of essential infrastructure and the prevention of displacement. So the bill text requires the city to first produce these two new analyses, so access to opportunity. Again, this is just the bill text, so I'm sorry, it's a little wordy, but it would look at, it would identify disparities with respect to capacity and quality of local schools, parks and open space and transportation infrastructure, among other factors. And then displacement risk would predict areas with populations that are at the highest risk of displacement based on construction activity, rising rents, property sale prices, eviction rates, projected climate change impacts and other factors of vulnerability. Then, the bill requires the plan itself and its budget priorities to increase access to opportunity and reduce the risk of displacement. So in a neighborhood that's identified as having high displacement risks and lower access to opportunity, the city would be required to prioritize investments to address overcrowded schools and transit systems, the need for more open space and more support for vulnerable tenants. And where housing growth is identified as a role of the plan, which won't always be the case, but where it is, the targets and land use scenarios would be required to direct new growth into the areas that are identified as having low displacement risk and having the infrastructure and capacity already in place to accept it, having high access to opportunity. So this slide literally just lays out what's written in the bill, like I said, but it's a model that's been very successful in Seattle, which is the fastest-growing city in the country, to mitigate enormous displacement pressures in communities of color and encourage investments and proactive sort of community investment plans in the neighborhoods that have serious infrastructure issues or have suffered from decades of disinvestment. So with that, I will now walk you through the process. So we first tasked the Office of Long-Term Planning and Sustainability to be responsible for coordinating across city agencies to get this planning work done. So as a mayoral office, they are better positioned to sort of force DCP and DOE and SEA and all of the relevant city agencies that need to, you know, produce this plan together, to work together and talk to each other and communicate and listen to one another. The city's first task would be the production of a first-of-its-time conditions of the city report in coordination with communities and city agencies. This report would take all of the data that currently sits across dozens of reports and plans at the Open Data Portal and put that data into one easy-to-use place. It would also revive the charter's requirement for the city to produce what's called a zoning and planning report. So that's the only thing that's ever required the city to regularly review the city's zoning code, identify challenges and decisions that produced unintended consequences when compared to their stated policy goals. So Bloomberg eliminated this requirement in 2012. Our proposal brings this standard best practice back. It would also require those two new analyses, or I'm sorry, it would include those two new analyses, in addition to that physical needs assessment to assess the state of our current infrastructure, really for the first time in a comprehensive fashion, which would identify both disparities across neighborhoods and the urgency of repair needs and communities based on different types of infrastructure. So then, through a public engagement process, New Yorkers would help decide where and how the city would distribute that critical infrastructure. Oops, nope, I skipped one, sorry. Based on the conditions of the city report, the city would work in partnership with communities and key stakeholders and the Long-Term Planning Steering Committee to determine the city's long-term needs for jobs, open space, schools and other critical infrastructure, and these would be measurable targets. Then, through the public engagement process, New Yorkers would help decide where and how the city would distribute those infrastructure targets throughout the city and their neighborhoods over the next 10 years. So community boards and borough presidents would be empowered to adopt preferred land use scenarios for each of their relevant community districts. To set you all up to do that, the city would be required to produce three potential land use scenarios for your district and draft plan as resources to help New Yorkers sort of envision different scenarios and priorities for the future. This is a standard feature of comprehensive planning processes. It would ensure the city is doing some of the light work and technical assistance that communities usually need to pay consultants, thousands of dollars for technical expertise to provide and produce. But then, community boards, borough presidents, the Long-Term Planning Steering Committee and the council itself would be empowered to develop and adopt land use scenarios of their own, either starting completely from scratch or making significant amendments to the scenarios produced by the city. So again, those three draft scenarios would just be resources, no one would be bound to them, and you all could adopt a recommendation that doesn't look anything like any of the three scenarios that they produced. So then, recommendations from the community boards, borough presidents, the steering committee and members of the general public would get sent to the council, which would be responsible for reconciling recommendations from various stakeholders and adopting a final preferred land use map for inclusion in the long-term plan. Then, those land use scenarios would set the vision for our neighborhoods, and we would measure future rezoning applications against those plans. So ULRP, everything would still be subject to ULRP. ULRPs would be required to include a statement of alignment that describes how the action does or does not align with the plan that you all recommended and was adopted by the council. Rezoning applications, like I said, would, you know, still go through the ULRP process, but just with these new resources to inform your and the council of decision-making in terms of approval. The production of the plan would take place over the course of four years, from the appointment of the steering committee to the adoption of the final long-term plan. So the graphic on the left outlines the points at which the bill will require public meetings, adoption of formal recommendations and council adoption. Community boards would be enabled to participate in every step of the process and would be required to make formal recommendations at critical decision-making points. So we essentially required some form of public engagement before and after the production of each formal document in the planning process, from the conditions of the city report to the final long-term plan. And again, many of these documents already exist in some form and are produced without notice to communities and without any opportunity to inform their content. These are really just intended to be baseline minimum requirements for participation required by law in the bill text itself. They will provide important milestones for the purpose of public transparency, but they're also designed to give the framework sufficient flexibility to grow and adapt that community planning process over time. And I will say that this is the area that we are, you know, working with the coalition and community boards and other stakeholders to sort of fill out, you know, and make recommendations for it in terms of what the robust public engagement process needs to look like. So this depicts the full tenure process, including when each document will be produced and the update and end process that would start halfway through the planning cycle. So after the first cycle, the cycle really starts over again. It's as much or more about the process itself as it is about what's actually in the final plan. So each plan, again, would just build on the last. That opportunity for amendment would happen, would begin in year seven with an opportunity for adopting an amended plan in year nine, and then year 10 would be a bit of a break and year one would start over again with another comprehensive plan adopted four years later. So compliance with the long-term plan would be encouraged and considered, but not required. So all rezoning actions in furtherance of the plan or not would still be subject to ULRP. Future ULRP applications would be required to include that statement of alignment describing how the rezoning does or does not align with the long-term plan. Community boards would entirely retain. Community boards would entirely retain their role in the ULR process with new data and resources assessing neighborhood needs to inform your decision-making. So if for some reason the council completely or even partially ignores community boards' input through that planning process and adopts a plan that you all disagree with or take issue with, or maybe there's been a change in your neighborhood, you and the borough president would still be able to weigh in on the application and oppose it or propose adjustments during the ULR process, just as you do now. The proposal also makes pretty significant reforms to our long-term infrastructure planning process to ensure we're spending our resources wisely. So as mentioned, the Conditions of the City Report would include that first-ever comprehensive physical needs assessment of our city's infrastructure. And unlike Plan YC or the One NYC reports, the final long-term plan will be required to include detailed budget needs for actually meeting the citywide and neighborhood-specific goals that the plan sets, including details of what's already in the budget, what still needs to get funded, that can actually inform our budget negotiations moving forward. The 10-year capital strategy would be totally reformed to reflect the full scope of our infrastructure repair needs and a wish list of the new infrastructure that we have to build in order to achieve our citywide goals. And then, annual budget documents would then prioritize those needs based on more robust assessments of our infrastructure on an annual basis. So we think this process holds a lot of opportunity for the city as a whole and individual neighborhoods, laying the foundation for better planning work to get done by meaningfully connecting the city's budget line and use and strategic planning processes, providing new resources, data and analyses to support proactive community-based planning, identifying and prioritizing communities' urgent budget needs, regardless of whether or not those neighborhoods will be resolved. Again, that was the number-one demand of the coalition that we're working the most closely with, the thriving Communities Coalition. It would require the city to do that regular review and recommended updates to the city's zoning policy in response to successes, failures and unintended consequences of the city's rezoning decisions. So as far as I know, GCP has only done this once in recent years and it was in Williamsburg as an assessment of the 2007 rezoning of voluntary inclusionary housing. And they found that that rezoning generated thousands more units than what they expected it to generate. And then there is no follow-up. They weren't required to do that report, so they weren't required to impose any recommendations. This would actually require them to take what they learn from an annual, you know, a regular review of their rezoning decisions and apply it to other neighborhoods and make recommendations for addressing the insufficient infrastructure issues that have arisen as a result of a decision like that. And then finally, increasing and improving coordination across city agencies to just force, you know, better coordination to better achieve our citywide and neighborhood goals. So that is my presentation. Sorry I went a little too quickly at some points. There's a lot of information. But now I will stop sharing my screen and I can pull up slides to answer questions as you need.
Thanks very much. It's very comprehensive, it seems to be the word. And it is a very comprehensive proposal and program. Mostly, the one thing that I think that's interesting is because we do get a lot of ULRPs at this particular community board and they do come to, the developers and applicants do come to us telling us what's good for the community. And this way, at least as part of it, we can say, well, wait a minute, these are things that we would want, that we consider to be good for the community. So I think that's a good, that's the one thing that jumps out and I think it's a good start. I guess we are, at this point, we will be discussing it with members of the board, board of staff, board, board members, committee members. I don't know where we need to start. Who wants to get started?
We start with committee members.
Okay. Go ahead, John.
I apologize that I could not get through because this WebEx platform, again, is unprofessional for community boards. We need to go back to the Zoom so that people can get in much more easily. I've been trying for 20 minutes to get through today. For some odd reason, it didn't work. In any event, because I did not catch the beginning of your presentation, I'm just going to talk in very generic terms. This plan extends over a minimum of what sounds like a 10-year period. Community board members are not on the community board going forward for 10 years. So there is actually no continuity coming from the community board as is currently planned. So I don't see why this kind of plan could be rolled out to a community board where the community board members and the council members have a term limit that is less than this plan calls for.
So the, the plan, the, you know, the, the first plan of, of each cycle, of each 10-year cycle would actually be produced within a four-year period. So it, it would provide that continuity. And then the, the update and amendment process would, would actually also occur, you know, a couple of years later, but it would be initiated within the timeframe of, of your time, term limits.
You indicated that Williamsburg was the only rezoning that got an examination. We have been asking for an examination in Community Board 2 for 10 years. We were rezoned in 2004. Here we are in 2021. We have all kinds of stuff going on that were not in what we called for in the rezoning of 2004. I don't understand how what you're proposing would remedy that.
So it would require, city, I, I can pull up maybe the bill text that requires it, but basically, for every plan, the planning process that's initiated, it would require the city to do a lookback of every rezoning that's occurred in, in prior years and actually assess the impacts compared to the intended, you know, policy goals of, of that rezoning, compare them, identify unintended consequences and then make recommendations for, you know, mitigating any sort of impacts on the neighborhood that haven't been addressed with respect to infrastructure.
I, I appreciate those words, honestly. We have a similar process in place now and it doesn't work. The process requires people that want to do the job. If we had those people in place now, we would not be talking to you because the system that we currently have would be working. It is not working.
Yeah, well, I mean, Bloomberg, like.
That's not guaranteed that we're going. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I'm sorry, my sound cut out for a second, but I thought you were done talking. You can continue on.
If I continue talking, it's going to be a series of issues related to our current system problems and what this system you are proposing does not solve. Okay?
Yeah, I mean, this isn't ever.
The, the, the problem is the folk have to want to do what's right. If they want to do what's right, it doesn't make a difference what system you have. This system, I will tell you, sounds so convoluted. I can't even imagine how folks are going to be trained to understand what's supposed to happen here. I don't even understand.
Well, I mean, if you all can understand ULR, you could certainly understand this. That's what I'll say. We've got a lot of complicated systems that, that people are able to, to engage with. I do totally agree that the success of a really good comprehensive plan will depend on, on a mayor, a given mayor. However, there are baseline requirements for, for fundamental good planning that we're simply just not doing. That if the city is required to produce a report, they will produce it. It may not say exactly what we want it to say, but it's an opportunity for organizing and pushing them in areas where they're just simply neglecting or completely ignoring fundamental planning issues right now. So I would say that it's progress in the right direction to at least require them to engage in those types of reviews, which, again, Bloomberg, he completely eliminated in 2012. It wasn't placed and he said it was redundant because the city already does this through their Plan YC or One NYC frameworks. And they accepted that argument and waived the requirement. Obviously, as long ago, that does not happen as a part of One NYC and this would revise that requirement.
Carlton, another question?
Yes.
Don Flon.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, a couple of quick questions here. You mentioned the fact that, for instance, the plan starts four years and then we'll go cycling through and then at the 70-year point, I believe we'll restart over, sorry, after 10 years, we start over again. Will we have to go through the first part where we have four years of basically planning this out? Or can we just go to a two-year cycle?
That's an interesting question. The way we have it written now is that it would, it would take another four years to produce the plan. We would want to go through that robust goal-setting exercise with checks and balances at each level of the process. I do think that, you know, the first plan will be the hardest one to produce and each plan thereafter will, will build on the last. And so in that way, a lot of the work will be done. And we will be requiring, requiring the city to produce these Conditions of the City Reports every five years, not every 10 years. And those will be really helpful for just keeping an eye on what's going on in our neighborhoods in a way that we just don't have all of that data together on a regular basis. A two-year cycle is, is possible. The one we've designed here, you know, allows for sort of robust test process that we designed to begin with. But that's, that's good feedback.
Yeah, to begin with, I understand the four years, but after we have this, have it set up, we don't have to go through a four-year plan every single time. We can just simply do a two-year plan. Next question, when we actually do a ULRP after we set this plan up and have our different targets and the ULRP comes to us and we basically say, no, we don't agree with this. In the past, we've only been, you know, we have recommendations, okay? They're suggestions, okay, that the developers tend to ignore if it doesn't work within their guidelines. If our guidelines say, after we set this up, we don't want any more buildings that are 100 stories high, okay? And we say, we don't agree with this, we basically say no to it. How much power do we have to actually stop that development?
So this does not give you veto power. Just the upfront about that. I think what it does do is it provides the new tool for advocacy, right? So you will have this plan, it will explicitly state that you don't want buildings of a certain type or size or whatever it is. And you can use that in your negotiations, not just with the developer, but with the council member and, and make a better case for rejection of the application or significant amendments. It's, it's a tool for, I think. We cannot give you the veto power via local law. That would have to be done via referendum. It's something that the Charter Revision Commission could have done, but they did not move a, a version of this forward that, through that process. And so what we did is design a process that would give you as many advocacy opportunities as you could, as we could through this new regime that would give you good reason to, that would give the council member a good reason to reject the application on the grounds of.
What is our tool of enforcement?
Sorry?
What is our tool of enforcement? The council person? That's what we have now and it's not working, so.
The enforcement of the plan? This, yes, this would just be.
Yeah, like that four-year plan.
This would just be a framework that compliance with the, the long-term plan would not be required. It would just be strongly considered and encouraged.
All this time to create a long-term plan that there's no means of enforcement for?
So I think that what we've done, we have two variables for, you know, incentivizing the implementation of the plan. The first is a requirement for the plan to be produced alongside what, what's called a generic environmental impact statement. And that will help assess the broad impacts of the plan. They're used pretty commonly on the other cities. We use them here in New York City for, for certain types of projects or citywide policies. But they're very underutilized and what they're able to do is do that broad assessment, get a lot of the GEIS or the EIS work out of the way. And developers who are comply, comply with the plan or are consistent with the plan in their applications will be able to draw from that analysis, which would directly reduce developer costs. We also created an avenue within the ULR process, which for consistent applications, would move applications in the council review process from a mandatory review to a discretionary review, which you all probably know as a call-up. So call-ups already exist. They apply to special permits, sidewalk cafes, et cetera. So you all comment on the application and the borough president comments on the application, the CBC does. But then, if the council member doesn't call it up proactively, it is assumed to get approved. And so that would only be applied for consistent applications. It would be a slightly smoother process for developers.
We disagree with that, councilman. We don't have any further say in the issue.
Well, it doesn't change the fundamental framework that we currently have.
Okay, so it's been four years planning for something we don't know how to actually make happen.
It is not required. I heard you say that it's, it's, you know, recommended, the statement of alignment, but it's not required for projects that come before the community board for any developer to comply, correct? It just needs to describe whether or how it is consistent with the long-term plan.
So how do you go about scoring this plan? Okay, for the first four years, we basically all get together and we have a discussion of which boroughs need what and how do we score the plan so there's, there's equity here?
That, I think, is what those two indices will be really helpful for. And truthfully, the, the long-term reform that we're making to the, our long-term planning, infrastructure processes are the most notable here. Because right now, the city's pretty much just operating blind. Like you all put together your budget needs and requests and like, as I'm sure it's true in this district, as it is in every other, the city just outright rejects everything and refers to a council member. And it's not, you're not provided with any assessments of, of how your infrastructure backs up against another community or where we're spending our funds and whether it's helping to achieve our citywide goals. This would really reform the process from, from the bottom up. So our, we have a thing that's our 10-year strategic plan. It has in its front half this list of really big goals that you would all agree with with respect to equity and repair and maintenance and sustainability and resilience. And it includes some anecdotes of places where the city is funding different projects to achieve those goals. But then the back half of the document is completely disconnected from that front half. It's just a, a literal list of agency spending plans. It does not indicate which projects are actually helping to fulfill the citywide goals that we've set, where they are in each district, how it's distributed with respect to income, to identify disparities. That's what this would require. So it completely reforms that document to first and foremost base that document on an assessment of community needs that would be.
Right.
With your input.
How do we actually make that work?
It would be used as a tool in our budget.
Another tool, but who actually.
Now. Sorry.
Okay, let me, all right, hold on. Yeah, everybody wants to jump in, so let me just say. Okay, let me just add, Bill, your points. Yeah, because we're jumping all over. Bill, you finish your, okay, you finish.
Well, I have one more, one more item and then I was done.
Mr. Thursday, Mrs. Bybush have their hands up.
Yeah, it's a whole lot of people have their hands up, so we'll finish with Bill. Karen, are you finished with yours? Okay, yes. And Daughtry, you finished on yours? Okay, so then we'll go to, after Bill, we'll go to Ernest and then. Yeah.
No problem. And I'm sorry if it seems like we're adversarial, but we just have questions here. Okay, now as far as the steering committees are concerned, okay? You mentioned that this is, you're continually in this, in the process of reevaluating. Now, the steering committees themselves, we have the committee boards and also we have the borough presidents. How much will everyone have a single vote in these steering committees?
So the voting structure in the bill is actually not detailed. So this is an area, again, where we're getting a lot of feedback, not just about how the chair will be appointed and how a voting process would work, but also specifically how the appointments will work for the borough steering committees. So this is again, where we would definitely welcome your feedback. Right now, it's, it's, you know, the borough steering committees are intended to play this role of like being this more diverse body that's truly represented of, of the borough. But it doesn't actually have like a number of, a total number of people that need to be on it. So, so it's pretty high level. And again, an area where more than welcome your input. We've already gotten a lot of recommendations on, on how that could be strengthened and how an appointment structure could work. No one has actually made recommendations on how a voting structure would work, so I would, I would welcome that as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ernest, now it's yours.
Okay, let me make an observation.
Hey Ernest, we can't really hear you. Are you able to speak up?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Sort of.
Okay. Okay. My observation is that this plan is. My observation is that this plan is more than an academic exercise. It avoids, it's something that the plan avoids addressing. And it has to do with the politics, the political decisions that are made to, to, to rezone and to develop. It doesn't address the issue of lobbyists like Jim Capicello, who have access to city halls or the mayor-- which can't subscribe to.
Ernest, I'm sorry, I can't hear what your question is for the minutes. Can you just restate quickly what your question is and then I'll, I'll try to capture it?
I just like, I'm listening, I heard the plan and it's, that's the question. The question that it doesn't address of, of politics involved. You know, I was involved somewhat with the Broadway Triangle in 1987. And I saw the politics, the raw naked politics. When I had city council members Victor Robles, attorney leader Victor Lopez, city council members Ken Fisher, the Jewish organizations making decisions regarding the rezoning of the Broadway Triangle. I got called into city hall to do one thing after there was a meeting of mine. And that was typically to do the paperwork, do the ULRP. Because Robles got a $5 million daycare center on the south side of Rooney's burn. That was it. No one else was at that table, not the community, not people from Bedside or Hispanic from Biscuit. You know, and that was the seventh substance of that decision. It ended up in litigation for years because there was some federal free housing money involved and we can't use store money to discriminate on this whole thing to account. This is a, this is just a, a, an academic exercise because I tried to stop lobbyists. I tried to stop the real estate board and encourage the, of the community. It's not at that table from the very beginning. You do an exercise and there's a commitment here and this thing doesn't even address that. It's a way to circumvent the community's will to keep you busy, but not to ask the hard questions. I'm happy that there was a Willis voice in 1987 with Tom Robbins and, and Rain Barrett, who does the meat. And this is how this thing operates. I've been sitting here forever and you got, you know, I, you cannot get the speed for Corey Johnson to even respect contextual zoning in downtown Brooklyn. There ever had been--
Mr. Augustus, we, we sort of have to allow for other speakers after--
I understand that. I just, I just taking an observation. You know, and, and, but this is what, this is a common, this is actually nothing but a exercise. Because the end of, they're talking about the community, but that's the process.
Mr. Gordon, Betty and I have had our hands up for a while. Can Betty ask a question?
Okay, I'll go to Betty, then I'll go to you, Jessica.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Thank you for everyone's time. My question is, at the end of the process, we seem to have this long-term planning steering committee with the mayoral appointees, the speaker appointees, the borough president appointees. Who ultimately is in charge? Who is in charge of that group? Are they elected from themselves? Are they appointed from the mayor? And, and who makes the final, final, absolutely final decision?
So, so that's the, see, a similar question to what I think, what I was speaking to with Professor Williams' question. So the, the bill does not take a position on who would be appointed chair. So we're taking comments on, on how that should be decided. They'll say that, like the CPC, we're, has the majority of appointments. That would not be the case here. And, you know, the DCP commissioner would not be the, the chair automatically. And, and we can, we can set sort of parameters based on feedback that you provide. So we would welcome your thoughts on that.
I think I just want to voice that that's the important thing. At the end of the day, who's making this decision? I mean, having served on the community board for a long time, as we've heard from my other colleagues, we can make recommendations, but it's totally not in the mix of the actual decision-making.
I hear you. And, and just to be clear, you know, the council would ultimately be responsible for the adoption of the final plan. The long-term steering committee would play a very critical, but actually earlier role in the process of setting those sort of numerical targets for, for citywide goals.
Thank you.
Okay, Jessica, go ahead.
Thanks. I have two, I think, quick questions, but first just to comment, to reiterate and hopefully summarize what some folks have said. If there's no clear power that the community boards have, I think there, I think you all will struggle to get support. And I hope that community boards are elevated through this plan. We do a lot of work and are most connected to the community and deserve to have a very clear vote in this. That's just a comment that I will put in the minutes. But my first of two questions is, and I may have just missed this, how is, how many plans will there be? Which is a bit of a proxy question for how is community defined? Is it, is it aligned with existing districts?
It's, it's with the community districts. So the idea is that the board would be the unit and, and the council would adopt. And that's actually sort of try to deal with some of the political issues that we're getting at, right? So council members would be forced to sit at a table together for the community districts that they share and make hard decisions about what infrastructure and what growth is going in which neighborhoods. And they would have to do so together in a way that they've never before. So instead of on an individual ULRP occasion where you're sort of just saying, no, not here, or yes, here and nowhere else.
I think we'll have to think through some mechanisms of how to actually enforce them to do that. You know, we, we have some relatively active council members in this part of Brooklyn, but there's some that are entirely absent. And I worry for those districts. The other question I just had is what is the right way for folks to send you? Like, you know, you're, you're noting some spots where they haven't been defined and need suggestions. What is the right way for people to send those after this meeting moving forward?
So there's, there's no right way. I am, I am all-time planning all of the time. So you can literally reach out to me directly with your thoughts. I will talk to you directly on the phone. You can pass a-- solution. Some community boards are making working groups for people who have time to really dig in and are meeting separately. It really could come in, come in any forum. Some folks are sending letters. I, I really would, I'm, I'm an open door.
Do you mind just, when you have a chance tossing your email or whatever is the right email in the chat so folks can see it?
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other, first, any from the, our landmark land use committee?
Excuse me?
Okay, yes.
I think Kay and I were about to say the same thing. Barbara Zalaggringer, Judy Stanton and Esther Blount and Daughtry.
Okay, back to, all right, well, we'll start with, we'll start Esther.
I think I heard you say that this plan works in Seattle. And as you know, Seattle has one of the highest homeless rates in the country. So I was watching 60 Minutes once and they showed that a postal worker, a lady that works for the postal office, we always consider those great jobs, was homeless. So simply put, why should we sign off on something that even as an example doesn't work? I mean, the problem with using that phrase affordable housing is that the developers don't build affordable houses. Until the real issue of the AMI is, is talked about and low it for, make the amounts, you know, reasonable, it's not going to work. So I think Seattle comparing, I mean, I think that's enough to say no. Well, just Google Seattle homeless rate and you'll see.
I under, no, I completely understand. And to be clear, the, the whole bill isn't on Seattle. It's just those two little indices that we pulled from, from the, the accident opportunity and the displacement risk index. But I will say that the, the things you just described with respect to resetting AMI and prioritizing community ownership, like community land trusts and cooperative housing, those are the kinds of things that would be the recommendations of the plan that we've produced. So, you know, these processes, it's not just-- it's literally, it's every other city. Most cities in New York State produce comprehensive plans. Not all of them can fix, you know, no, no comprehensive plan can fix every problem. But they can set a path for, you know, achieving the types of fundamental changes and shifts to our attitudes and how we talk about affordable housing and how we set those goals in a way that others simply cannot. So why are we setting for volume of affordable units when we should be talking about exactly who needs to be housed? And not, not the most housing that we need to create, but the depth of affordability. We need maybe a smaller number of much more deeply affordable units to house homeless people and the people who need it most, right? And that's, this is the kind of process that can create an avenue to set those goals. Instead of just, you know, getting a soundbite from, from a mayor who's running for office, we can work together and actually achieve the types of ideas that have been lying around and whose uncertain the city for decades, but we've never really made a concerted effort to implement it at a broader scale.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next over to Judy Stanton.
Carlson, I've been, I thought I was listening carefully, but I missed an important detail and this concerns me. The question is, does the city council, does the current city council vote on this proposal introduced by the speaker? Or is it postponed to some later, I don't know, later date? Because I, I attended the public hearing where this was debated heatedly within the city council relevant committees. And there was uniform opposition.
So you're asking if the council, is this council's putting on this bill?
Yes, since they're all term limited.
Then, almost all. There's a couple that aren't, but yes. So the, the bill is introduced this session. In order for this exact bill to get passed, these council members would need to vote on it by December. But we do not have a vote scheduled. It's not like ULRP, it's not on a clock. We-- that's one step in the legislative process. We have no concrete plan for a vote right now, which is why I'm continuing to go out and get feedback. And then next session, if we did not vote on it, it would reintroduce her and again and go through that whole process. It would restart the legislative process.
And when, and knowingly, the two-thirds of the city council are going to be new and many of them will have no idea what they're doing. Timing is very peculiar.
Well, I think that that, you know, I tried to make this, this point in my presentation that that's as much of a reason why we should start talking about strategic planning as, as it is a reason not to, right? So you all are making choices at every step of the way, right? And it would create a process through which that new council member, whoever it is, would be forced to engage with you in this process rather than just, you know, having a perspective they have coming into the council and making individual ad hoc rezoning decisions based on individual groups and whoever walks in the door to convince them one way or the other that it's good or bad, right? Which is what is currently happening and that's our process and that's what we need to do right now because we have no other options. What this would do is give us another option. It would give us a new way, which would start with your input. It would start with your district needs statement. It would bring us all through a process together. That council member, new or not, would learn with you through this process and make a decision in coordination that actually was responsive to the planning process they, they too participated in. It's, it, you know, the, the, the absence of that process is just as scary.
All right, thank you. Next is Barbara. Barbara Zalag.
Thanks. Some of my questions have been answered at this point, but is it my understanding now that this, this is a bill that would go through the council and then have to be signed by the mayor?
Yes, it is a bill that's already introduced, yes.
Right, so there's, there's no opportunity for the voters to vote on it as a referendum?
No, this bill does not require referendum. There are things that, like, there are things that we could attach to, to, that, you know, there are things we could do in the future that could build on this that could be out of ballot. But the thing that we've designed was, is specifically designed to be able to be passed by the council.
Right, I, I, I just want to end my voices to my colleagues on the board who have indicated that unless you give us some real power, and you know, if you're setting up all these rules, you have guidelines, this is what you're supposed to meet and all, and, and then you're not even letting us veto. You know, as you probably know, developers in the city get whatever they want. And I don't see how this is going to change things if you don't give the community board some real power to say no. You know, so I was just wondering, we, obviously you have a group here of community board members and people interested in the community board, but I'm wondering if you could give us an example of one or two arguments that people with other concerns have voiced in opposition to the proposal as it is now?
You can take a look at the hearing. I mean, there, we do have a coalition that I disagree that there was from opposition to this bill. We're working with a great coalition that supports the proposal. Been advocating for comprehensive planning for over a decade. It's led by ANHD. It includes the Municipal Art Society, RPA. They have suggestions for strengthening the bill. They will continue to be our partners in, you know, making amendments and strengthening it. So they're still working out exactly what they want their line at it to be, just as, as you all are and lots of other stakeholders who we're meeting with. We really are serious about getting feedback. I'm not just here to present and then walk away.
Could you give us an example of something that has been changed in this bill as a result of feedback that you've received?
Well, nothing has been changed as of, as of yet. We're still in the gathering process, which is why I'm here. We're not going to start making amendments until we hear everyone's voices.
Thank you.
That's just how the legislative process works.
Thanks Barbara. Before I go, Daughtry, you have left this next, but I just want to make sure that any, to anybody who wants to speak or have a question from the board or the committee that has not spoken or yet. If not, okay, we'll go to you, Daughtry. Back to you, Daughtry.
I think at this point, my colleagues have represented my concerns, one of which Ms. Blount brought up. New York City is not Seattle and Seattle is not a success. But more importantly, you know, really the city council should be working for the community boards. The community boards are the people who know the community districts the best. And we need to be funded and resourced. And I think that the city council and these, the Office of Long-Term Sustainable Planning could be a resource for that, but without power, it means nothing.
I hear you. And just so you know, this is, this is my most common feedback that I get. I've, I've been to 21 community boards. Comes up every time. So I, you're, you are heard, but you are also heard all across the city. We hear you. We understand.
Thank you, Daughtry. Once again, are there any community board members, any committee members? Or, you know, public members who have any other points or questions that they have?
Mr. Gordon, I just want to add, the speaker Corey Johnson, when this was presented at the, at a city council meeting, it was not well-received at all by the council members who heard it. They could not understand why this process was being brought forward at this time. And there were too many questions that were not answered. So this program was clearly put together without consultation in advance with the community board. So our issues are not addressed in this presentation at all. I can't see how this could go forward. I would also ask, we have upwards of 100,000 homeless people in the city of New, New York now. And there is no plan to accommodate them. We used to have a series of SROs where those folk would be housed. They're all luxury housing now. Those people are on the street or maybe even a ho, in hotels if they are lucky. How is this plan supposed to address that?
That would be, you know, one of the chapters of a comprehensive plan, right? So a comprehensive plan is, this is, again, it's, it's difficult to talk about because this is process reform. You all need to decide what goes into this plan. You all need to take the recommendation of, of legalizing SROs again, right? Like, we, we made those illegal and, and you would have to recommend that to the council to, to make them legal again. And that is what, what one of the recommendations would be. And that can only be determined through a planning process. And in fact, the, the city's, you know, housing and homelessness advocates, as we, I think, February of this year released a report calling for a comprehensive planning process that exactly aligns with the proposal that we have developed to get this done because it's, it's a core way that we need to be talking about, you know, not just homelessness and not just housing, but all of this service infrastructure that needs to go into supporting communities and getting folks the support that they need. You know, it's not just a singular issue and that's what comprehensive plans are really good at doing.
Okay, thank you, Annie. Not hearing any other further from committee or board, I'll now go over to community forum, which will allow non-board-- I'll now go over to community forum, uh, which will, uh, allow non-board, non-committee members a chance to speak or question for two minutes for each person. Do we have anybody from the, let's say, non-committee, non-board, community people that have a comment or question? And give us your name and if possible, organization.
So hello, this is Burnell Greer from Impact Brooklyn. Good evening. I'm, was familiar again with this process and we, Impact Brooklyn is a member of A N H D. So have heard both the pros and cons. One, and you know, I've also been to several mayoral forums and what have you, and asking about whether any mayoral candidate would give veto power to the community board. You know, when different things are being done in the community, we always, as a community board, have the review. But whether we, you know, say no, it really, you know, it's, it's an opinion. And whether or not that would ever change. So my question is, you had mentioned that this was built, again, of examples from different states across the country. In those other states, how are decisions made?
It totally depends. Um, so it depends on, on the state, you know, requirements. A lot of states out in the West have requirements. Cities are literally required to make comprehensive plans. I, I am not familiar with any cities that have the specific, you know, a community board unit as it's designed here with its appointment structures from the borough president and the city council member. And the, the planning process is, is usually, you know, provided with a lot of community resources for, you know, the technical expertise that you all need to make. But the adoption of the plan does tend to sit with the legislative body. That's one of the common themes of, of comprehensive plans. And, um, again, what makes is really forcing coordination across council districts where, you know, typically individual applications are treated in this sort of narrow view and if you don't like it, you know, it just doesn't happen. Not in my neighborhood, but this would force council members to look, you know, at the city as a whole and not just shift growth from one district to the next. Because they need to adopt it together and that is a really standard feature of comprehensive plans.
I do find that, um, again, a lot of times being in the seat at Impact Brooklyn, we are constantly educating, um, the council members, especially if it goes in regards to real estate transactions and what's going on in the community. You know, there's one in again, having voice and shaping a plan, but with, you know, I'm, I'm troubled by the fact that we would not, you know, or again, I'm saying we, but the community board overall would not have more of a meaningful vote in anything that would be transpiring in the community. And we've seen the ills of that. So, you know, throughout years. So that's just my commentary on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, are there any others, uh, community individuals?
Ms. Rayburn, raise your hand up.
Okay. Unmute yourself if you can.
I, I am.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, you hear me. Yeah.
Okay, yes, give us your name.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I have probably put everybody to sleep if they've been reading the comments that I have put into the comments section, the chat section, quoting Professor Tom Angotti and Lynn Ellsworth about this top-down Robert Moses-like plan. So, you know, read it or not as you wish. But I find it remarkable that, uh, that, uh, the city council, which has failed us so miserably, having to, uh, having abetted the mandatory inclusionary housing that they voted for that was supposedly to promote affordable housing, has in fact done quite the opposite. And, uh, there is a troubling issue about trust of both Speaker Johnson, with all due respect, and any number of council members who are espousing this kind of program. So between the city planning commission and the city council, and in some cases, not all, co-opted council members, I really worry about letting the foxes into the hen house. So I just want to say it for the record, C B two, um, for as a community member, uh, be forewarned, please. Do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. All right. Are there any others from community? Uh, okay, yes, go ahead. Give us your name.
Hi, I'm Caroline Todd. I'm on the transportation and public safety.
Oh, thanks, okay.
I, hey, Annie.
Hey, Caroline.
Questions, and I know Annie from school. Um, one.
Conflict of interest.
Okay, sorry. I do, I have some clarifying questions and I live in C B two. Does this prevent any future legislation toward a different comprehensive plan or a charter revision update?
No, it does not. It could be amended via local law by the, any council. And it could be built upon with a referendum to add enforcement and power structure changes that have been referenced tonight.
And then, that's, that's great. Uh, and then does it take away any current roles on the community board?
No, it adds some. It adds a significant amount of responsibility for participating in the planning process. Um, and so that is extra work, but it does not remove any role for community boards. And in fact, it is designed to enhance it.
Good. Yeah, thanks, Annie.
Thank you. Are there any other committee people, I mean, well, non-committee people, non-board people who wish to have a moment?
Ms. Medley, did you want to speak?
Mr. Gordon, I do have a final question.
Let's see, I just want to get Ms., who, who's the lady, uh, Taylor first before Mr. Do?
Ms. Clinita Medley, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I had a comment, but I, I really, really, I wanna, no, I don't want to speak very much.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, Mr. Do, you have the final.
My final question is, what is the projected cost of implementing this program? Has that been budgeted for? And what is the resource that will be provided to each community board to implement this program?
So the administration and the council have differing opinions of what we believe the cost will be. The council believes that it would cost roughly forty-five million over the next ten years. And that was designed in partnership with consultants and planning experts and planning representatives that have worked with the city and contracted with the city for many, many years and have implemented comprehensive plans in other, um, cities. So it would be an upfront investment for sure in the kind of planning that would, um, you know, help build, you know, proactive planning for every community. The bill, bills in general, legislation is not good at specifying resources. So we, we are not able to include it, for instance, a dollar amount of what you all would need in terms of funding in order to resource or participate actively in this kind of process. And what we can do and where we are accepting lots of feedback is stipulate the activities that would need to be done and, and completed by the city in order to provide you all with the kinds of support that you need in order to get it done. So while we can't include a dollar amount, we can describe the resources that you need, um, in bill text. So we were very much. And it's not even the budget because we haven't passed the bill yet, so.
I have a question. Where does city planning come into play in this? We hear of the long-term strategic planning committee. We hear of community boards coming further down the line, an advisory board on top of an advisory board. But there has to be an agency of experts that are charged with implementation. Even if we don't always agree with them, that must exist. So where is their role?
So the Office of Long Term Planning and Sustainability, that mayoral office would be responsible for coordinating across all of the agencies. And so that would include the Department of City Planning to produce a lot of the population projections, analysis that will go into the city report. They would probably take a lot of the work to actually design the land use scenarios that would be produced in that draft. Uh, and to provide technical, you know, assistance to different community boards. But a good comprehensive plan is only like five percent zoning. And Department of City Planning, as in my experience, has been pretty narrowly focused on the zoning code. And so what a comprehensive plan would do is force all of the other city agencies food recommendations that sure might actually, you know, have zoning implications. But H P D, E B C, D O B, all of the city agencies that make our city run and actually are responsible for implementation would be on equal footing to produce this plan and would be on the same hook for implementation. And D C P would be one of those many parties.
Um, so comprehensive planning, you're right, is, is all these different, um, agencies and all the work of health and, and transportation, et cetera. But they have to be under an umbrella. So the city planning, even though, as you say, zoning is only five percent of comprehensive planning, what is going to be the lead agency to bring all this together?
It would be that mayoral office, the mayoral office, the, um, long-term. So, so that's why mayoral offices exist in theory is to, to play that coordination work. And my understanding from seeing the people who have worked in different administrations is that Bloomberg was actually better at giving them the sort of lead that they need and the agency that they need to, to boss the other agencies around. And so in, under Bloomberg, that office produced the first version of Plan Y C. That was probably the closest we've come in recent decades to a comprehensive plan. And that mayoral office took a much stronger hand in that coordination work. Now that office has, has dropped long-term planning from their name, they mainly focus on sustainability. They do a lot of great work, so it would need to be resourced and, and staffed in a different way than it is now. But it would be situated as a mayoral office, which would have that direct line to the mayor rather than a city agency. Um, and the reason we did that is because, a- as I'm sure some of you have experienced, you know, I've literally sat down at city, at tables with city agencies and, you know, for example, if G C P says, hey, where are we at with that park? The parks department for this, you know, major project that we're working on. There's nothing actually forcing parks to be responsive to D C P's needs. They're on exactly like equal footing, right? And sometimes they're competing for turf. A mayoral office sits above those two city agencies and can actually boss each other around to listen to one another. And, and that's the purpose for, for those offices to begin with. So that's why we sat up there.
Um, okay. Mayoral offices, I saw that, uh, uh, are staffed by, um, I don't know how to put this, how to phrase it. High-level, high-level employees at mayoral offices tend to not be bureaucratic. So we're removing the bureaucrats with all political affiliations out of the process?
Well, commissioners are political. I, I can, I can say that with some certainty. I understand what you're saying, but, um, but I do think that, that the, the liberal structure of how these offices are, are run would be better responsive to, uh, a mayoral office. Because again, there's just nothing need to listen to D C P. And in fact, usually there are reasons for them to actively not listen and do the opposite. You know, there's, there's issues between agencies as there are between all entities. Thank you.
Okay, yes, Ernest. Oh wait, wait, whoa, 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 is that Bill also?
Yes, Bill also. I actually have a question, not a comment.
Yeah, still in community forum.
Okay, we go to Bill first and then I'll go to Ernest.
Okay, if there's anyone who's in community forum and wants to speak, you can go first, but otherwise I'll go. Do you see anyone?
Yeah, I, let me go, Bill. Just a question. What can't?
Community forum, community forum, Ernest, not board members.
Okay, give it to Ernest. I tell you what, uh, Bill, give it to Ernest, give it to Ernest.
A question. What can city planning work on behalf of the community as opposed to pushing, uh, the projects by, for developers?
I'm not sure I have the answer to that question. You mean with respect to individual rezoning applications?
With anything, I have called Brooklyn City Planning and they seem to be pushing projects for developers. Uh, and if you had a question for the, uh, for city planning, Brooklyn's office, they hesitate and they defer and they implicate.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, and that's, that's in part why we did not sit the responsibility fundamentally for putting this plan together with them. Like they, they're moving individual rezoning applications. That's what they've done since the nineteen sixties. And they are technically mandated to do that right now, but they, um, are not. So what we're doing is, is really prioritizing the long-term planning function of, of what that agency was set up to begin with, but it's never really fulfilled.
Okay, Bill, go ahead.
Hey, thank you, uh, Chairman. Uh, Annie, thank you very much for coming in here and, you know, going to the lion's den. But one of the things I'm going to ask your question is, and I'm sure you've heard this over and over again, but I'm going to reiterate it. Okay, mayoral candidates come and go, politicians come and go. The people who actually know what needs to be done within the community or within the city are the community boards. We understand. We also have the historical history of what goes on throughout our board. We need to have more power. We need to have more control. Because we know what is needed within our community, within our borough. Okay, politicians, when they come in, they have agendas, their own personal agendas for whatever they need to do for their own political ideals. Okay, which sometimes are in parallel with the, the community and sometimes they are not. Okay? We need to, and this, by the way, we've been asking for this planning of this type forever. Okay, so we want this. We truly do want this and this is a great idea. But it has to be in a way that it works for the board members, sorry, the board members, the community boards and also for the boroughs. And this plan right now doesn't allow that. How can we fix this?
I hear you and I've alluded to this a few times with respect to the fundamental power structures of different entities in New York City. We can't change that via local law. Um, so, you know, that would have to be put on a referendum. And, and that is, that's a different process than what we're going through now, but it's not impossible. And it's like something that could be built to over time.
So, okay, thank you. I believe we've heard from, well, anybody in the community that wishes had questions.
Yes. There was, there was a question in the chat, um, asking if lovers could clarify the relationship between this new plan and the one ninety-seven A process, please?
Sure. Um, so the one ninety-seven A process would still remain in place. One really good piece of feedback that I have heard and really liked is that you should make clear that any one ninety-seven A plan that is passed, um, would actually just automatically be an amendment to the plan. So it would just be part of a comprehensive plan, which I think is a really interesting and good idea. Um, but as you, as you may know, there are a lot of problems with the one ninety-seven A planning process. They really have done everything they can, the city and D C P, to discourage their creation. They're not providing any resources. They're not proactively engaging communities in conversations that would lead to the production of a one ninety-seven A plan and they're usually doing the opposite. So what this is designed to do is essentially force the city to repeat the same process once every five years. Um, and that is what we designed this to do instead of sort of leaving it in the hands of communities to find the resources they need to put a plan together, we force the city's hand to actually engage proactively in that process in every single neighborhood.
Excuse me, uh, Carlton?
That's Caroline, go ahead.
I see we have in the meeting Judge Duane Paul. I'd like to recognize her.
Yes.
Hello, good evening, everyone. I pray all is well. I can give you a brief update on the courts. As many may know, we transitioned right after the pandemic, right at the beginning when the city shut down, March 16, and we converted from in-person proceedings to virtual. But now we are starting to open back up fully. We recently, last month, was giving authorization through the state to receive vaccines for our staff who works here in the courthouse. And so in the middle of May, we will be 100% fully staffed through, well, the judges have been here since phase two for New York City. But now, in about a week or so, we are going to be fully staffed. That'll start that full transition to in-person to some degree. What we're looking to do is to continue using what works. And so we've been able to do virtual appearances. So the idea is that litigants would come in for the first time if need be to file. And then thereafter, they'd be able to appear either virtually at home or even by phone. We've been doing conferences, two-sided conferences for quite a while now. And so we're going to merge the things that have been working and at, to some degree. You know, it was different to be able to see the litigants, but we have been able to do some trials virtually on consent of the party only. And so I will put some information in the chat for a hotline you can call if you have any questions or pending or new cases, and a website where you can get court information and court help. Okay, stay safe, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. Just curious, are there any specific courts that have the priority towards opening up back in person or like housing, the big civil, state supreme, civil, state supreme, criminal?
Yes, yes. Good question. So housing has been doing trials in person for emergency cases. Those who are illegally locked out, things of that nature. So housing, criminal, and family. I will say statewide, because New York and Brooklyn in particular is densely populated, there are some things that are not able to do as easily as others. With trials and people being back in the building, but because we are densely populated here, our transition is a little slower, and we're seeing how much we can sustain virtually.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Again, well, do we have anybody else?
I just want to know, we're not voting on anything tonight.
This is just a information, a fact that I was about to just ask Caroline Church, that we do have a, still is another part of this discussion coming up. And Caroline Church was setting a, another one of these meetings with a professor of government, I guess.
Urban planning.
Yeah. Has that been said?
Yes, it has. So on, so on the 10th of May, because we weren't certain when this item was going to be called up for a vote, we're going to have Professor Tom Angotti provide us with his view of the plan. He recognizes the need for comprehensive planning, but he does have some issues with the way it's laid out. So we'll hear from him. And so when the time for a vote comes, we will have heard both sides of the story and be able to make better informed decisions.
But we're not asking for a vote at this time.
Can I move to adjourn this meeting?
I was just about to, I'm trying to wrap up. Let me just again thank Annie Levers from the New York City Council Office, and thank everybody else for their participation. We have a motion to adjourn from Judy Stanton, and you have a second, Daughtry? Okay, all in favor, everybody says no objection. Thank you very much. Thank you, one and all. Your next date is going to be May 10 on this. Thank you.
I object.